Hi, everybody. My name is Ed Lee and I'm the Director of the Chamber of Commerce in Town. So on behalf of the business community and really the entire community, I wanted to say it's a privilege to welcome everyone and say thank you for attending tonight. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for organizing this. Your participating in this forum says you care about the election process and voters making informed decisions at the ballot box. Welcome also to everyone watching this on TV and other devices. Thank you for spending your time in this way because again, it pays respect to the election process. We look forward to an informative discussion tonight.
Thank you, Ed Lee, for your warm welcome and for co-hosting tonight's forum with the St. Peter Herald and the League of Women Voters St. Peter area. My name is Margot Dru Shell and I will be your moderator for this evening's forum for candidates for the Niklet County Board. I'm a member of the St. Peter League of Women Voters. Assisting me is Edith Thorstensen, also a member of the St. Peter League of Women Voters. This forum is being recorded in its entirety without an audience on October 11th, 2022, at the Performing Arts Center in the St. Peter High School. Please note that excerpts or edited clips of candidate forums may not be used for partisan political purposes. The League of Women Voters is a local, state, and national nonpartisan volunteer group. The League encourages informed and active participation of citizens in government and influences public policy through education and advocacy. The League of Women Voters does not endorse or oppose candidates for public office or political parties. Candidate forums follow the unbiased and impartial format established and published by the League of Women Voters of Minnesota and the League of Women Voters of St. Peter. Our event tonight is designed to inform voters about the relevant views of these candidates. Tonight, we will ask our candidates questions submitted to the St. Peter League via email prior to this evening by the public, by our co-hosts, and by the St. Peter League of Women Voters. The St. Peter League of Women Voters and co-sponsors determine which questions will be asked and attempt in good faith to cover areas of interest expressed by constituents in advance. Questions on a similar topic may be consolidated. Questions that are hostile, embarrassing, inappropriate, or of a personal nature will not be asked. As forum moderator, I have the final responsibility as to which questions will be asked. Our candidates numbered by district are the following. District 1, Jennifer Andraschko and Marie Drannel. District 2, David McGuire and Terry Morrow. District 3, Jack Colars. District 4, Mark Deen and Tom Hagan. District 5, John Lipke and Kurt Zins. Our format for the evening is as follows. Candidates will have a minute and a half for opening statements. Then on a rotating basis, candidates will each be asked questions. They will have a minute and a half to answer. At the end of the forum, each candidate will have another minute and a half to make closing statements. Our timers this evening from the St. Peter League of Women Voters are Harriet Mason and Lynn Solo. Lynn will hold up a yellow sign when 15 seconds are left and a inherent stop sign when time is up. Candidates may always finish their sentences. We have asked each candidate to be specific in their opening statements as to the reasons they are running for office and what unique qualities, skills, experience, or expertise they would bring to the job. Opening statements will be given in the order that the candidates are seated, alpha by district, beginning with District 1, Jennifer Andraschko.
Thank you and good evening. My name is Jennifer Andraschko and I'm honored to be here as a candidate for Niklet County Commissioner in the 1st District. I live on the north side of St. Peter with my two little girls and I am a transplant from Wisconsin. I wasn't sure if I should ever mention that on the campaign trail, but it's true. I've lived in Minnesota since 2006 and in this part of the state since 2009. I'm a social worker by background and training and have had the honor to work in the nonprofit and public sector for more than 20 years now with experience ranging from work with incarcerated parents in the county jail system to policy advocacy work for youth aging out of foster care to providing clinical mental health care. You know, there's something as a social worker over the course of your career that happens, which is that you start to see patterns. Patterns of policies and programs that help and those that fail. And I think this is why I've always had to pay attention to county policies, programs, and systems because it would be impossible to have done my work without that knowledge. I find myself, I think, then with this wealth of knowledge about many, not all, but many of the programs and systems that the county board administers. And I think what are also practical professional skills and personal characteristics. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Marie Drannel. I am the incumbent candidate for District 1. I was first elected in 2010 at the encouragement of the prior seat holder. I'm a CPA here in St. Peter. I've had a practice downtown since 1994. I primarily work with self-employed and farm clients. My skill set is I am familiar with numbers. I tend to be fairly open and unbiased when it comes to making decisions about items. I tend to look at both sides of an issue and fairly quickly make up my mind. I am a native of Traverse Township and have lived there all my life. I am the fourth generation to own the farm that I live on. I... Oh, I don't know. It's been a busy summer. So, thank you to the League, thank you to the Chamber, and thank you to the Herald for sponsoring this event.
My name is Terry Morrow. I too am an incumbent on the county board. I'd like to also thank the League, the St. Peter Herald, and the Chamber because this type of opportunity really contributes to the health of our democracy and I know we're all glad to have this opportunity tonight. I've had many years now of experience serving the folks of this community on city committees, on the school board, in the Minnesota House of Representatives, and now as a commissioner. And there are a couple of principles that have come to me over those years of experience. One is to understand what a board does is it sets the direction and makes difficult decisions for the county. Our amazing staff do the day-to-day work. So as we talk about the things that Niklet County has accomplished, I know we all want to thank our staff for they're the ones who do the fantastic work. In addition to my experience, I was thinking about my experience four years ago and Jack, you and I were together. We were at this League of Women Voters forum and I said I had three priorities. Highway 14, broadband expansion, and assisting mental health. Now we're seeing Highway 14 being constructed, we see broadband progressing, and we have expanded our mental health services. I look forward to tonight and having opportunities to talk about more of these issues that are facing all our folks every day. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Jack Colars. I'm the incumbent commissioner for this race. And on behalf of all of us here tonight, I want to thank the League, the Chamber, St. Peter for its beautiful building here, and all the candidates. You know, my experience as a county commissioner since 1997 gives voters, I believe, the benefit of institutional knowledge about the operations, about how county government works, and how it can work to serve all county residents. This experience is valuable in continuing the work as a representative county commissioner. One of the key issues, and maybe we'll get to this tonight, facing county government is attracting and retaining employees to do the work of the county and providing services to our residents. Our county just completed a wage study to adjust pay and benefits for nearly 300 employees. And again, the experience of working through two wage study reviews, several union negotiations, annual budgets provided me with the experience and the knowledge to make more studied decisions. I'm running for the county board to represent all residents of Niklet County. Some commissioners live in the city, others reside in the country, but once selected, we must all serve the county. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you to the League of Women Voters and the Chamber for hosting tonight's candidate forum and allowing us to share some thoughts on the Niklet County Commission. I am Mark Deen. I have called Niklet County home almost exclusively since 1966. I have served our citizens as a doctor of chiropractic in North Mankato since 1987. It is there that I have owned my business, my homes, and together with my wife, we raised our family. The last 12 years, I've had the honor of serving as the mayor of North Mankato. I am a lifelong learner. I appreciate new challenges and I believe in term limits, even if self-imposed. With the new precinct 4 seat being opened due to redistricting, this seemed the right opportunity to transition positions. Our family has a long history of community service. My father also served as North Mankato's mayor and as a Niklet County Commissioner. I too have a passion to serve and want to continue to use my demonstrated leadership skills in advocating for our citizens. I see opportunities for us to engage our community partners as we address the issues of the future, both those known in the short term and those yet to arise. I have a wealth of experience and a depth of established community relationships through my practice and work as mayor to rely on while I provide a fresh point of view. For those reasons, I am now seeking election as a Niklet County Commissioner. Thank you.
Tom Hagan. When the... I'm sorry, thank you. Tom Hagan, when the city was redistricting recently, after Mark Deen lost the initial election, something happened that was reminiscent of gerrymandering to me. And that was that a new district was created in which Mr. Deen could now run again for the same office unopposed. So I waited till the very end, see if anyone else would file, and no one did, and so I filed. I'm a strong believer in democracy and I think every seat ought to have at least a contest so that citizens have a true choice. In my situation, I've served on many, many boards and committees, too many I wish to even think about. Probably the most interesting one was serving in a congressional office in Washington DC as an intern. But more important to me were the fact that I taught for 30 years in public school, traveled extensively in Asia and Europe, and restored five historic properties in the Mankato area. These are significant to me because they bring to the board a unique perspective that perhaps some of the other board members might not have. But more significant than that was the fact that I became kind of a citizen watchdog and went to council meetings and observed Mr. Deen carefully. So I pretty much know where he stands on all of the issues and I'm hoping tonight we can give some really good information, get some good questions as to how the two candidates differ so citizens can make a real choice. Thank you.
Good evening. First of all, I'm the incumbent in the 5th District and I'm going to skip some stuff because I agree with everything my fellow incumbents said tonight, all three of them. I'm John Lipke. I live north of Cortland, about two and a half miles, and we built the new house there in 2008. My son is on the farm site and he is the fifth generation of Lipkes there. I'm married to my wife Lorna for 35 years. My son David is an ag lender. His wife is deputy communications director for Mr. Representative Finsted. My daughter's a pharmacist at the VA in St. Cloud and her husband works in the hospital in St. Cloud. I've always been involved in agriculture, never really full-time. I've spent 35 years at 3M in New Ulm. I've served on school boards, church boards. I was on the state board of the Minnesota Corn Growers for five years. I was on the board, a director of Minnesota Soybean Processors in Brewster, which a lot of people here don't know about, but it's one of the biggest soybean processors in Minnesota and ties for the largest biodiesel. Including four years, I was secretary there. I was president, vice president of the Hub Club. I've been your commissioner since 2017. I have a... It's turning out to be a rather prosperous sideline of investing in ag real estate and managing it, and I'd like to continue serving the constituents of the 5th District.
Hello and thank you to the League of Women Voters and also the St. Peter Chamber for hosting this forum. My name is Kurt Zins and the reason I'm running for commissioner is to serve the people. I've always felt compelled to serve in my community and have done so previously as a volunteer fireman, as well as a Niklet City Councilman. Now that my sons have grown, I felt compelled to serve on the county board. My primary goal is to serve as a voice on behalf of my constituents with transparent, common sense leadership with a mindset of fiscal and social responsibility. I feel that my education and work experience will be an asset to both the rural and residential residents of the citizens of District 5. I'm a lifelong resident of Niklet County and a co-owner of a small business that serves both agricultural and residential communities. Before owning my own business, I worked for Mankato Implement, now Kibble Equipment as a manager, and Zins Implement, both in ownership, management, and equipment sales and service. Prior to that, I was a regional sales rep for a construction equipment company working with municipalities, contractors, engineering firms in the upper Midwest. My other experience includes building homes as a carpenter and owning and managing rental properties. As both an employee and a business owner, I know how to get things done, how to work with people and employees and budgets, and I know what it's like to have to make payroll. My only agenda is to protect and preserve our county so that everyone can experience Niklet County area that we all know and love.
David McGuire was not able to be here tonight, but he submitted an opening remark that I will share. I wish to thank the League of Women Voters for their invitation to the forum for candidates for Niklet County Commissioner. I had planned to attend, but there were two deaths in my family. My uncle's visitation is the night of the forum and I should be there. I'm running for county commissioner because I do believe I can do the job and have ideas that would be beneficial to the residents of Niklet County. I believe that county government should be somewhat more transparent to the people of the county and be more financially responsible, especially when everyone in the nation is experiencing financial difficulties. The local government bodies should not add to the problem. Everyone working for the county, from county commissioners to desk clerks, should treat everyone who does business with the county with kindness, dignity, and respect, regardless of their status. From legislators to farmers and business people, regardless of their race. Nobody should be turned away or ignored or treated with hostility and canceled by the people they elected to represent them on the county board. Commissioners should be willing to listen to their constituents' questions and ideas and be able to provide answers to the best of their ability. If elected, I promise to do just that. Again, I would have liked to have been there, but some unfortunate family events occurred that make it impossible for me to attend. So I wish you all a good forum. Thank you all for your opening remarks. Our question period will move forward with questions that are asked in a random order. So before I turn it over to the first person, I will read the question and then read your order so that you kind of sort of know when you're coming and it doesn't take you by surprise. So, question one is overseeing the budget is a major responsibility of a commissioner. How would you balance county residents' needs for services with the tax burden on residents? And question one will be answered first by Marie Drannel, followed by Tom Hagan, Jack Colars, Kurt Zins, John Lipke, Art Deen, Terry Morrow, and Jennifer Andraschko.
Budgeting is one of the major things that we work on during the year. Our budget process is quite unique. Department heads and staff bring their budget requests to the budget committee and then the budget committee vets out the needs and balances based on prior histories. We look at... We have a capital improvement plan, so major purchases, equipment, infrastructure, things like that are budgeted out on a 10-year capital improvement plan. We pretty much look at every line item in that budget over the course of a three-week period and trim and cut and basically, it's pretty lean. And then we weigh it versus the prior year and work on our levy according to that. It is difficult to project out until we see what our wage numbers and our labor numbers are going to be because we employ roughly 250 people and people are our major budget item and those benefits for our staff. We look at... The assessor's office assigns the percentages of what's commercial, residential, and wasteland and that's how our levy is allocated and I'm out of time. So...
Next is Tom Hagan.
Of course, we all know we're currently living in a very difficult time of inflationary pressures. And so this is a really critical issue. I would hope that we could keep taxes as low as possible because if we increase them, it just becomes part of that cycle. Taxes increase, so business expenses increase, so costs go up, and it goes on and on and on. So the more we can hold the line, the better off everyone will be. I would suggest things like holding back on purchases that are not absolutely essential for new equipment, for example, that perhaps we put a freeze on hiring. We all know that these cycles come and go. Some of us remember 2008 when things were particularly difficult and within three or four years, we were back to a raging stock market and rapid growth. That will come around again once the war in Ukraine is over, once this COVID situation settles down and the supply chains begin to pick up providing necessary materials. So every attempt should be made to hold back, hold the line on expenses to help in the process of controlling the inflationary cycle. And I would say I'm hoping for a mild winter. Maybe we can hold back on the need for road plowing and save some funds there. We may even have to go to perhaps the reserve fund to help hold that tax line for folks. Thank you.
Jack Colars is next.
Thank you. In my 24 years as a county commissioner, I've been involved with reviewing the use of public funds, public tax dollars, 24 times. The experience of examining the budget proposals from all departments is a careful process requiring each department to come before the budget committee to quantify and defend their budgets. This annual review process informs both the board and the department heads about the need to be careful in spending while being capable of serving the vital needs of our residents. I believe our budget process is sufficient in its present form. This year, you may have noticed, I worked in real estate. The last couple of years, home sales went through the roof and people thought that their taxes are going to go through the roof too. They won't. Our levy will be only 5.2% when it comes to December. Thank you.
And next is Kurt Zins.
I think being fiscally conservative is just making efficient use of tax dollars. I've worked with budgets, both large and small, while running a family business, managing a multi-location equipment dealership with many employees, as well as dealing with city and fire department budgets. Whether large or small, sometimes the only difference in budgets is the numbers of commas in the numbers. Yes, a county budget with multiple departments can be extensive, however, they're normally structured in smaller formats between departments that can be better analyzed once you break them down one bite at a time. I think the next most important thing to do is look for trends, duplications, inefficiencies, and rather just try to find a low-hanging fruit. It's not necessarily about what we can be cut from the budget, but what might be in excess in one department that can be used in another department or area. My experience has taught me that larger, more complex budgets tend to be the more wasteful, inefficient budgets. I too do not want to let the inflationary times that we are in be an excuse to raise taxes, so I too would want to manage our spending as much as possible.
Next is John Lipke.
Well, I wrestled with that 5.2% increase more than anyone and I was hoping it would be like four, but because of this wage survey, it basically has to be 5.2 and maybe we'll get it down a little bit in December. We got to keep our employees. There's turnover and we got to pay our employees a competitive wage to keep them, to avoid all this retraining. So I pay a lot of taxes. I got 600 acres of farmland. So I don't like taxes going up at all, but this is necessary. And we, as a board, wrestled with it and our department heads wrestled with it and the commissioners, we have all wrestled with it. So I'm sorry it's going up, but it's going up. Thank you.
And next, Mark Deen.
To sustain a balanced budget, especially a budget the size of the counties at $50 million, it has always been necessary to prioritize needs over wants and do more with less. As a leader, it is important to have open discussion with the invested members to identify the issues, reach reasonable consensus, look for partners that may be able to assist, and then budget available resources to live within the available means. The city of North Mankato has a similar budget. We have a $28 million budget and we've been working on our budgeting process for a number of years. We've been able to reduce our property tax rate over the last seven or eight years and continue to work towards those goals of retaining, reining in our costs. One of the advantages we've had is we've had continued growth within the community that helps offset those costs across a greater number of people and businesses. And so as we've been able to see that growth, we've been able to keep our costs and live within our means. And I'm hopeful that we can continue to see growth both in North Mankato and St. Peter that will help reduce the county's rates as well. But to Commissioner Lupke's point, our personnel is our most expensive piece and in this time of challenging workforce issues, it is one that we need to keep our biggest eye on.
Next, Terry Morrow.
Great, thank you. And thank you all for sharing your thoughts on this. This is obviously a very key point of what a county board does, set the budget. And our staff came forward again this year, as they did in previous years, and brought us reasonable, fiscally prudent, conservative estimates of what needed to be done in the coming year. I'm going to give you a few examples. We still need to fill dispatcher positions because dispatch is a tremendously challenging job and we need to compensate those folks who are doing that critically important work. We need to hire a child protection employee to help kids in our community. We need to hire truancy folks. The hiring we're doing, each position is analyzed carefully by the board. We talk to the department heads and we come to a conclusion of what must be done now, what could be done later, making sure we have money in reserve for, I would say, a rainy day, but the pandemic was much more than a rainy day. And the challenges of the last few years of balancing budgets, keeping staff, which is what we did, keeping staff available to meet the increased needs of folks in our community, to provide the help and support that is so important in public safety, health and human services, property services, as we're mentioning, home sales, so much that we do. And we were able to do it. Our increase is low compared to other folks and I'm proud of the work that we've been Our increase is low compared to other folks, and I'm proud of the work that we've been doing in terms of budgeting responsibly.
And the last person on this round is Jennifer Andraschko.
I am someone who pays attention to public policy and someone who believes that, you know, the policymakers at the state level, our public policy tells a story here in Minnesota. So at the level of the legislature, you know, over the course of history, they have written laws that statutorily require counties to deliver certain critical services. Services that many of the people on this stage have already described. You know, if, if someone calls from a long-term care facility and says, "I'm a staff person here, and I'm witnessing abuse of this aging person," we don't get to say we don't have the staff to answer that phone call. And we have to, you know, I actually was in another county a couple of weeks ago, and happened to be the first person on the scene of a violent crime, and I called 911, and no one answered my phone call for seven minutes. We, we cannot be in a position where that's true, and it was happening in this county because of shortages. I know we're hiring for those positions right now, and they are critical services. And then, of course, I mean, with my background, I'm always thinking about what it's like to navigate the system of care when you are struggling with mental health concerns and addiction. And so we know that our, our infrastructure, our roads in Minnesota here, they're, they're aging, we have lots of things to balance, and I think we will need to continue to budget and prioritize our spending so that we can meet those regular maintenance demands and not create a burden for taxpayers.
Thank you all. Question two. There have been reports of groups of people actively disrupting board and council meetings. What plan, if any, would you propose to recognize their concerns while ensuring the business of the board is not disrupted? There have been reports of groups of people actively disrupting board and council meetings. And then the second part is, what plan, if any, would you propose to recognize their concerns while ensuring the business of the board is not disrupted? And the order for this question is Tom Hagan, Kurt Zins, Mark Dean, Jennifer Andraschko, Marie Drannel, Teri Morrow, Jack Colars, and John Lipke. Go ahead.
I have particular expertise in this area, having taught juniors and seniors in high school for 30 years. Disruptors are a common factor in our business. What you find out is that people get most angry when they are not being heard. What we have happening is a lot of folks coming forward, meetings wherever, and feeling that their voice is not being considered. We've experienced that at City Hall in North Mankato, and silencing people, gathering them to silence, just makes people angrier. It's not a solution. Doesn't, people, those angers don't go away. So one of the things I would suggest, if you have a group that's causing a particular problem, is agree to meet with them outside of the situation you're currently in. They can appoint a spokesperson. If it takes two hours, if it takes four hours to hear their concerns, let them be heard, and then respond to their issues in a rational way, so that even if you can't come to a consensus, they, they can walk away feeling, "Well, at least I had my say. It was clear to me." It worked in high school, anytime you had a difficulty. You don't embarrass people in front of a group. You always take them aside and deal with them in a separate situation. And I think that we could easily reach consensus using that kind of a technique. Now, of course, there are some folks that just want to come and disrupt, and then you've got to deal with that as a separate issue, but these problems can be solved.
Next is Kurt Zins.
I agree with much of what he's saying. I think it's important that people have their voice, and that they have their time, and that they can be heard. You know, much as he said, it also, it's making sure that as a commissioner, that you're accessible to your constituents, and all people for that matter, and, and listen to them. With regard to the disruptions to the meetings, I think one of the best things you could do is make sure that you schedule enough time, whether it be before the meetings for public input or during the meetings, and, and again, give them as much time to voice their opinions peacefully as they possibly can. If it goes beyond that, I think if they're going to be disruptive in a meeting, there probably needs to be some closure to that meeting, so that the board can continue to do the work that they need to get done during the meeting. But mostly, give them their day in court, let them be heard. If they want to be disruptful, then you may have to try to at least let the board continue their work.
Mike Dean is next.
Thank you. People want to have their chance to voice their opinions. Oftentimes, they will come to council meetings and try and raise their issues. North Mankato has a couple of public forums for that. We have used strategies like limiting the time that people can speak to make sure that they're concise in their presentation. We allow them to provide the council with written materials that will, that will subsidize what they have to say. If, and quite honestly, for most people, they don't realize that councils and, and commission boards don't make snap decisions. They're there to intake the information, process it after the fact, have staff provide additional information, and then follow up with people afterwards. So that needs to be clear to people. We have published rules in our, in our council agenda to make sure people are aware of the things that we're doing and why we're doing them. And then, again, as Mr. Zin stated, meet with them outside of the, outside of the chamber. I meet with people at the grocery store, I meet with people at, in my office, I meet with people at church, and give them the opportunity to, to tell me what their, what their concerns are, and then bring that information back to the council and to the staff to try and address them as necessary.
Jennifer Andraschko.
I, I think that incrementalism and kind of slowing things down or following a rigid process when you're dealing with real human things can be really challenging for people, especially when they're acutely suffering, or have felt disenfranchised, or disempowered somehow. And it reminds me of this, in my work as a social worker, you know, ratings, asking someone to rate their depression if they're hungry, or don't have a place to live. So I think attending to those real human things that are happening is critical, and maybe the only way through some of that, outside of like locking people out of a room, which doesn't feel like the kind of listening that we should be doing at the, the kinds of meetings that you're describing. And then, I guess, secondarily, I, when I talk with students, students will sometimes say, you know, "Is incrementalism the way of, of the world? Is it, should we be disruptors? Should we be protesting?" And I, I think that there's a place for people to raise their voices in a way that's respectful to process and to others, but I also think that that kind of voice can move the conversation forward into, you know, into spaces we may not have explored otherwise. So raising public awareness, for example, about certain issues. I'm out of time, I think.
Marie is next.
Thank you. We have had situations in my term on the board, and prior to the board, I sat on planning and zoning. It is, you have to let people voice their opinion and give them the time to voice their opinion. You need to hear their comments, you need to document their comments, you need them to document their comments, so you understand what they're saying. You need to have a plan for that. At the board, we do have a public comment period. We have, at least I have, went beyond that public comment period and reached out to those individuals beyond the meeting. It, it can get out of hand. There are people who get angry, extremely angry. We had a planning and zoning meeting 15 years ago, and I literally shut down the meeting. It was out of control, and we emptied the building. We had law enforcement involved. And again, people are very passionate about their concerns, and sometimes have trouble directing them. Once everyone calmed down, we had a civil conversation. Concerns were expressed, understood, and we could all work together and move forward. But we had to hear those concerns in a civil manner. Shouting from the back of obscenities from the back of the room is not conducive to good business.
Next is Teri Morrow.
Well, Tom, I want to prove that I'm listening to the comments of others. You mentioned that people get angry when they're feeling they're not being heard. I'll say that in my four years here on the board, we haven't had that kind of anger at our meetings. I'm hoping that's a sign, Tom, that folks do feel they're being heard. We've had, we, we've held meetings just to address folks' concerns on key issues. This is kind of a question in my wheelhouse, I know that probably Marie and Jack are thinking that as well. I work for the Minnesota School Boards Association, and one of the main things I do is advise school boards that have had these type of meetings, and some that continue to do so. I've written articles on this topic, I've provided guidance for de-escalating, to making sure people are feeling heard, to coming up with alternative ways so that the boards can receive the input, the ideas, the suggestions, the criticisms, the complaints, that folks in our community should be allowed to present to us. That is what we take on when we offer ourselves up in this role. We will listen, we will communicate, we will respond. There are tools we can use, I know Marie mentioned one. In my work with school boards, I've advised them, take a recess, which in essence can be that cooling-off period. Talk to the folks off the table, get, go away from the table, talk with folks, and then return to the meeting. Often, that will resolve the conflict that's occurring.
And next is Jack Colars.
Thank you. I, I think the question is, there's been reports of disrupting at meetings, and what do we do about them? To echo what Commissioner Morrow had mentioned in his four years, and I think a few years before that, I can't recall a disruption at a county board meeting. Why is that? Because people feel strongly that they can reach out to their commissioners. If the commissioner can't answer the question, he'll go to the department head to get the answer, the department head will then get in touch with the resident, and the individual will have been heard. They may not like the answer, but they will have been heard as to what policies are in our county. Only a few times, as Commissioner Drannel mentioned, land use issues, sometimes livestock barn issues have become contentious in Niklet County. I go back to the days when the Davis family built their, their big dairy barn out here west of St. Peter, and we were in the, in much contentious speak at that time, but it worked out. So people need to be heard, we listen.
And our last answer comes from John Lipke.
Well, I've been on almost six years, and I really only recall one meeting where it was very disruptive. And Comish, the late Commissioner Kemp kind of calmed it down. Like Marie said, everybody gets a chance at 9:05 or 9:03 to come and have their couple minutes of speech, or a little more sometimes. And I believe if any threatening call comes in, the sheriff is there. So I think we're managing it well. I'm sure at planning and zoning, it gets a little dicier, because that's more initial. So, thank you.
Thank you all for answering that question. We're going to change it up a little bit, and this time I will go through the rotation and then ask the question. It might make it a little easier to keep the question fresh in your minds. So the rotation of people for this question begins with Teri Morrow, Jennifer Andraschko, Kurt Zins, John Lipke, Tom Hagan, Mark Dean, Jack Colars, and Marie Drannel. Question three. As a county commissioner, what measures, if any, would you support to reinforce or ensure voter confidence in our elections? Starting with you, Teri.
Very much for that question, because I think this is key for many people in our community and in our nation. They want to be sure, they want to know that our elections are safe and secure. And I am proud to be a Niklet County Commissioner, because I've had, I've had a chance, along with other commissioners, to closely examine what we're doing for elections in Niklet County. I am confident that we are doing elections well. What can we do in the future? What measures, I think, we were asked about? Well, we're improving the technology. We're improving, we're getting more secure equipment as part of the voting process. In addition, we were able to adapt in ways that encouraged secure voting during the pandemic. We added features that we had not done in years past, because we wanted to make sure that every eligible voter who wanted to vote could vote. So in terms of measures, I think this is a key area in which staff are able to achieve the goals of election security that we want, and I'm tremendously proud of the staff that worked for Niklet County. I went through everything from the Franken-Coleman recount and other situations, and I would tell voters today that I believe they can vote in Niklet County with confidence.
Jennifer Andraschko.
Thank you. Civic engagement is so important to the future of our democracy, and I, I know that in Minnesota, I, I mean, I think, I think we do a pretty good job at maintaining the integrity of our elections. I know that in terms of measures that I would take, you know, engaging in the process with the Secretary of State, or the Attorney General, and the local county attorneys, if there were to be a concern brought forward, I know there's a process in place to facilitate that, and I would honor that process. And I've, I've noticed the sort of, the step, the game has been stepped up, I think, in our county around how elections are happening. I just read Jackie's article in the, the name of the, the county line, and it's incredible. We still use paper ballots, that's the way we count every single vote, and there's something really real about that, that even when I, as I was reading that, I, I felt that confidence in our process. So, and even signage, culturally and linguistically appropriate signage, early voting, and, and creating an environment countywide where we're encouraging the process, and that we want to know if people have questions about the integrity of our elections.
Kurt Zins.
Thanks, John. Once again, I agree with most of what's been said here. I think every citizen does have the right and the responsibility to vote. I think the Niklet area election judges and the poll workers do an excellent job of ensuring the process is carried out safely and securely, and I trust it's correct. However, with being, with that being said, I do have some concerns with mail-in ballots. I think the intention of sending out mail-in ballots is a noble one, and everybody's trying to make sure that everybody has that right to vote, and I agree with that. However, I do think that when you mail out the ballots, the ability to manipulate those ballots does exist. I realize also, too, when myself, I get my ballot mailed to me in Niklet Township, and, you know, again, I, I trust the system, however, I just can't not mention that the possibility for somebody else to vote my ballot exists, when multiple ballots are sent to one residence. And that would be my only issue with the voting. Otherwise, I think Niklet County does a great job, and I trust that it's done correctly.
Tom Hagan, next. Oh, excuse me, John Lipke, next.
Well, Jackie Colpet is great, and she runs our stuff there. I do have kind of a concern about mail-in ballots, too. I did hear from one constituent who said he checked in on his, you can apparently see if it's counted, and his was not counted. But of course, he came to me two months after the election, and I did ask Jackie to inquire, but I think it's pretty good. The mail-in ballots, the townships have the opportunity to have them or not to. So if you don't want them, tell your town board, or tell the city of Lafayette, because they have mail-in ballots. Thank you.
Now, Tom Hagan.
Thank you. So in the last election, I noted that this was one of Mr. Dean's top issues, was voter integrity. I think this is a red herring issue. I think this is a red herring issue, actually. It actually questions the very volunteers that we have in this county, hundreds of people who show up at polling stations and monitor the vote, and who've done it successfully for years on end. I'd like someone to come and show me the number of ballots that were rejected, for whatever reason, in this county. It's, it's an infinitesimally small number. This whole issue is just simply kind of red meat thrown out to the conspiracy theorists who want us to believe that somehow our elections are fraudulent or not something to be trusted. And I have no evidence of that, and I think it's a shame to bring that kind of questioning to the citizens who donate their time and their efforts to make sure that our voting takes place correctly and efficiently and fair.
Mark Deen.
I believe our, our system of voter registration and proof of residency is fair and reasonable for our voting citizens, and we encourage all of our voting public to take the opportunity to vote for their elected officials. To Mr. Hagan's point, our election judges are well-trained, and we appreciate their volunteerism for doing that, that, that hard work on that, on those election days. Our polling locations are safe, accessible, convenient, and well-publicized. The balloting equipment is regularly tested and ma, and well-maintained. It is also standalone and not involved with the internet. We use paper ballots, as was brought up, which is the ultimate integrity check. We have a well-considered, and, and, and process of validating the election results, and they're canvassed by the local jurisdiction at the end to ensure that they were appropriate for our local jurisdictions before they're fully submitted. Thank you.
Jack Colars.
I agree. We are supportive of elections in Niklet County. My first interest in government work was surrounded by the assassination of President John Kennedy in 1963, when I was 10, and the killing of Martin Luther King in 1968, when I was 15, and Bobby Kennedy after that. That's when I started to really pay attention to politics. In the fall of 1971, I was old enough to vote. I voted today. I haven't missed an election in 50 years. There are some elections that turned out the way that I liked, others that I didn't like. But not until 2020 did I see an incumbent occupant of the White House work to poison our election process the way the former occupant did by claiming fraud before and after Joe Biden won. I trust our election process because I trust our election workers, volunteers, and the people of Niklet County has hired and trained to conduct fair and free elections. To call into question the work of these people is a travesty, and it's worked to poison the way some people feel about elections. This, my friends and fellow Niklet County residents, is a dangerous path for our democracy. I urge you to reject it.
Marie Drantl.
Jack, you're a tough act to follow, but it's true. We have a safe, secure election process. A confident voter, to me, is an educated voter. Our staff, our volunteers, our election judges know the process. They share that process with other voters. They share it with their family members. They share it with their neighbors. In 2020, I had a neighbor who worked as an election judge and worked for the county during the process, and her comment to me was, "Every day I share that message, and I hope those people share that message." I, I tend to like mail-in ballots because we get a greater rate of return. We get better voter turnout. The rejection factor was, was slight. It's a safe process. It's our right to do it. We, and we need to educate our children on that process for the future. They need to see part of this process. And again, a confident voter is an educated voter. Thank you.
Thank you all. The order for question four will be Jack Colars, John Lipkey, Jennifer Andraschko, Terry Morrow, Kurt Zins, Marie Drantl, Tom Hagan, and Mark Deen. Question four states, "What do you see as the biggest challenges to mental health and social services in Niklet County, and how would you address them?"
Thank you for the question. I, all county departments are essential in their own way to meet the needs of our county residents, but it could be argued that the County Health and Human Services Department provides those most crucial needs to residents with its work for adult and disability services, child support, healthcare coverage, food assistance, just to name a few. Our budget used to be, Health and Human Services used to be the largest. Now it is second-largest, and it's providing those types of dollars that come not only from our levy, but from the federal government and those state dollars. We need to continue to support those things. If federal dollars didn't exist, we would need to pick people up and help them in Niklet County with levy dollars. Thank you.
Next is John Lipkey.
That's a good question. That's probably not my area of expertise, but frankly, I think we need the judges to be tougher on drug dealers and drug possession. A lot of the crimes are drug-related, and they wind up in the, involving our social services. So I think the other commissioners could answer this a lot better than I can.
Jennifer Andraschko.
I think, in short, our mental health needs, as expressed, exceed the capacity for the system to provide for those needs. I, I think that probably, there's probably nobody watching this and nobody on this stage who doesn't know someone who has had mental health or substance use, mental health, changes in mental health symptoms, or an increase in substance use over the course of the last few years. I think it's, it's also not lost on me that it is really hard to do this work. The, the people in the counties doing this work are balancing the pressures in their own lives as COVID impacted all of us, and then working with a clientele with fewer resources and exacerbated symptoms. So I think part of addressing the mental health and substance use disorder needs of people in Niklet County is really supporting the workforce and the vicarious trauma they experience, and there are all kinds of numbers of ways we can do that. The other, the other thing I, that I think about is, as we look to expand infrastructure and balance the, the budget without raising taxes, I think there are creative ways to do that. There's, and I have like five seconds, but there's something called the do not, does not meet medical criteria tax, which is a priority of the Minnesota Association of Counties to look at reinvesting that tax paid by counties to the state to reinvest those dollars in the county at the local level to support that growth in infrastructure.
Terry Morrow.
This is clearly a very, very important question, and I'm glad you asked it. For the mental health and social services challenges that we face here are being confronted across the country. And I've been deeply impressed by the residents of Niklet County who have said to me and who have shown in their own actions that if a person is hungry, if a person is afraid, if a person has no home, if a person needs support, Niklet County is there for them. Niklet County residents are there for them. These programs are difficult to, the, these positions, as Jennifer, you rightly say, are very difficult to fill. We have tremendous staffing issues finding people who are available, who can come and do this very important work. And you'll remember some of the positions I mentioned that we're hiring for right now. Because none of us think kids should go hungry. None of us think that people should go without support for medical help, including mental health support. And we have to transition from short-term fixes to long-term sustainability as we seek to support people. Inflation impacts all of us. We've heard the word inflation appear at this desk, these tables. Just imagine how inflation, just imagine how a pandemic affects somebody in need of our support. And I'm glad we're there.
Kurt Zins.
I'd say that one of the biggest challenges with mental health and social services is staffing, like many people say, but especially staffing when it comes to mental health. Medicare and Medicare, Medicare and Medicaid funding has not increased in 20 years. Therefore, there's a lack of new people joining the mental health care field due to a lack of return on the cost of the expensive education and training they need. This lack of staff puts greater demands on the currently available service, services, and it causes delays, and it's pushing the system to a breaking point. As a county board, I think we need to use our influence with our state and federal legislatures to provide more help. I think we also need to do that basically as residents. The state and federal services are mostly mandated by the state, state and federal government, and they're pushed down to the county to take care of. And if they're gonna push it down here and not give us help, we need to use our influence for asking for more help.
Marie Drantl.
Thank you. As Mr. Zin said, a lot of those programs are mandated at the state and federal level and are somewhat funded. Again, Department of Human Services at the state level is really messed up. They are demanding services. They change their programming. They change their funding stream. And then it makes it challenging for staffing. You can't hire someone for a program that's changing every 15 seconds. You can't expect them to do their job if the criteria of their job is changing because it's changing at a different level. The other issue we have is a lack of facilities for, for out-of-home placements for children and adults. We are placing kids in North Dakota, in Wisconsin, in Pennsylvania because there are no local facilities to meet those needs. We are leveraging some of those dollars and able to build back the federal government, but it all leads to staffing, and we're doing our best to fill. We're working on flexible schedules. We're looking on remote. We have recently remodeled our North Mankato facility to make it more user-friendly for the clients. We have purchased the property out on Marshall Street for the mental health drop-in facility. It has, every time I go out there, I, I see smiles. It is something we haven't seen with our Clubhouse group for a while. So, I mean, we could go on and on on this topic, and, and the solution is, is huge.
Tom Hagan.
So I'm gonna stress two aspects of this problem. First of all, the aging population. In Niklet County, we are an aging population. There are more and more old people every day. And the longer we can keep them in their homes and out of institutions, the better the savings are for the county. So that's an easy part of the solution. The second end is the other end of the problem, youth. It is far easier to build a child than to repair an adult. And the problems we talk about, drugs, mental illness, et cetera, begin early. And that's when the intervention has to take place. So the more emphasis we can place on the education of young people, in the long term, the fewer problems the county will have. I think we need to think outside of the box on this. Children need to be, especially in, in the later years in school, exposed to different opportunities rather than just sports events to keep themselves busy after school. There needs to be internships, work opportunities for young people so that they can integrate themselves into the community and have a feeling that they are useful and valuable. The internet, of course, has been a disaster for young folks who spend most of their time playing games and simply conversing with their friends. We've gotta find a way to direct young people to become youthful adults and avoid those mental illness problems that come as a result of that lethargy that many of them experience.
Mark Deen.
Mental health is obviously a, a major concern for all of us, especially in the youth. That seems to be an even bigger issue now since the pandemic, and so we need to address that early and often. We need more school counselors. There's a lot of those issues, and personnel is obviously the biggest issue for it. I commend the county on the Power Up Clubhouse and the Marshall Lighthouse, or Lighthouse on Marshall. I think those are great resources for our, our community, but we need to do more. And I think there's really an opportunity with telemedicine that became more, more acceptable during pandemic. I think that's a way that we can reach our mental health clients in the privacy and convenience of their own home and use those services to try and address that in a little bit more time-efficient manner when we're in a time of, of workforce shortage in that area.
Thank you all for answering four pretty meaty questions. I'm gonna mix it up a little bit now with a lightning round question, which is just yes or no. That's all you get to say. And we're gonna start down at the far end of the table with Kurt and just work our way back down, so I don't have to stop any of you to remind you who's next. So here's the question, lightning round, just yes or no. Would you support an ordinance to require that all dogs in Niklet County be immunized for rabies?
Tough question. I'm gonna say yes.
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 No.
No.
Yes.
Thank you all. And I'll take a little bit of a breath after that. The order for question five is as follows. Kurt Zins, Jack Colars, John Lipkey, Tom Hagan, Jennifer Andraschko, Marie Drantl, Terry Morrow, Mark Deen. And question five is a long one, so ask me to repeat it when I get to you, if, if you need, please. Weather events tied to climate changes have resulted in Niklet County experiencing both flooding and drought. What long-term plans would you support to help mitigate the impact on our county in the short and long term? Beginning with Kurt Zins.
Well, that's a tough question, and it's way outside my area of expertise. I think there's obviously a lot of debate on climate change, and, you know, it's hard to know who to believe. I do believe that the climate is changing. I don't know how, you know, whether or not that we truly are, you know, the main factor for the climate change. I'm sure we're part of it. With respect to your question and how it would relate to flooding, I guess it would be, I would have to try to defer that question to some of the, some of the experts that are better at that than I am. County soil and water would be probably, probably my first choice of who I would talk to on, on how they feel that they could help remedy the problem. And I'm sure it has to do with drainage, you know? I think farm drainage is important. We need to feed our people, but we also need to be cognizant of what that farm drainage does downstream. And, like I said, it's one of those tough questions where Pandora's Box. You, you need the drainage, but you need to be concerned about what the drainage does downstream. And I would defer that question to more expert than myself.
Next, Jack Colars.
Would agree with Kurt on that. I don't know that the impact from a county can be something that is going to change the world, but certainly we could use, and the ideas of the land use issue, soil and water would be an idea, I would guess. Solar power, wind power, those advances in that area. I think we've seen those come to our county and become approved, and in many cases, people have been against them for whatever reason. And using efficient And using efficient vehicles at the county level would be another idea. But again, it would be marginal in its impact on what's impacting this world. But we should do it.
John Lipke.
Both those gentlemen answered that very well. I have a Dodge pickup. I also have a Toyota hybrid. I put most of my miles on the Toyota hybrid because it gets three times the mileage. Like Jack says, maybe the county staff should look into more of that. I don't know how much of the climate change is affected by humans, but remember, Greenland has a name because it was colonized by Viking settlers 1,000 years ago who made their living there for a number of years before the climate changed and they got frozen out. So, thank you.
Tom Hagan.
Climate change is an existential crisis. I think this year has taught everyone in the world the problem we are facing. You don't have 104 degrees in London, a 12,000 record drought in California, fires, hurricanes like we've never seen before, durrechos in Iowa, flooding in Pakistan where half the people currently don't even have a place to live or plant a crop. What we can do about this is begin immediately with some sustainable movement, sustainable energy, sustainable natural environment, and sustainable growth and development. All new buildings ought to have solar panels on the roof, if that's feasible, and should have heat pumps for delivering their energy to heat the building. Our forests are terribly at risk. Every forest we plant, every tree we plant helps sequester carbon out of the atmosphere. And currently, we are losing, we're going to soon lose, 1 million ash trees in Niklet County. We've lost all our elm trees. We've lost all of our butternut trees that have died. Very interesting problem. The butternuts currently have a disease that's taking them out. And then the additional problem of explosion of the deer population that is destroying the young seedlings in the woods that would normally take their place as these trees die because that's their food source. So there are tons of things we can do at the county level to begin to address this problem, which will soon affect us all. Climate change is coming, folks, and it will also affect Niklet County.
Jennifer Andraschko.
I think as we consider responding to the weather events that we know are happening, in the short term, some of the things I think about related to flooding are probably pretty simple to engineers, but making sure that our ditches are clear. And in the long term, thinking about, you know, how we're holding water. And I think maybe I have questions for the experts. Is really, really much of my response would be I want to think about how we can innovate in the long term. So, for example, thinking about the rate of flow of water when a major event happens upstream. We know that fast-moving water is more erosive than water that's moving at a slower pace. And so thinking about sort of that as a long-term goal becomes important when we're investing in roadways that need to be safe, that run alongside major waterways. And those major erosive events can impact the integrity of those roadways. So, and then it's not a silver bullet, but one of the things that I know has come to conversation is thinking about innovative alternatives to crop covers. So Kernza has come to light, and I think we're starting to talk about that in many circles now. But, you know, this, I mean, it's pretty amazing, right? An eight-to-12-foot root structure. It's like a tree growing upside down in the earth somehow. And we know that the roots of something like Kernza can create healthier soil and can also absorb some of those extra nutrients that would otherwise be flowing into our waterways, so.
Marie Drannel.
Thank you. Our emergency management department and emergency management director has a plan for every natural disaster on Earth. There is a protocol on how things are applied. When it comes to climate change, I attended an ag tax law conference a week and a half ago, and one of our speakers was an economist who said that climate change was made up by people trying to make money off us. He cited the fact that it was hotter in the 30s, wetter in the 40s than it is now. That was his opinion. It was kind of a fascinating conversation. We need to work on our drainage systems and our water management systems. We have too much water in some places, not enough in another. We waste our water. Our drainage systems are managed by our county board as the drainage authority. Our systems are aging. They are not built for modern farming practices, and it is an expensive process to overhaul those systems. And modern farming practices are changing. We are seeing a lot more cover crops. Government is encouraging farmers to do that, and they're seeing the benefits of it without monetary encouragement. We are blessed that our our topography leads to flooding. Everything runs downhill. We are going to struggle with that, no matter what we plan for, but we need to be cognizant and prepare for that.
Terry Morrow.
Well, thank you. It's nice going in this position because already so many good ideas have been expressed. I think we need to divide the climate question into two parts, Jack. I think you're right. The county has opportunities to help manage the effects and also to contribute to the solutions. So let's first talk about managing the effects. We, Niklet County, we come across erosion problems with our roads and bridges. Roads and bridges essential to our farming community, essential to our businesses and our residents. We're responding to those. We're setting aside money to fix those problems that have been caused by erosion. And I think our public works department's done a nice job of getting federal and state aid to address the problems that have arisen because of the climate. Kurt, I think you're absolutely right. Our soil and water conservation department has done a nice job in terms of looking for grants, getting grants, helping individual landowners contribute to the controlling of water and water flow. I think we should mention that we now have this one watershed approach. In the past, one county would do one thing, one county would do another, and a city would do a third. Now Niklet County is part of the one watershed project that is trying to take a more holistic look at how we control water in our region. Water is essential to what we do. Water is essential to our quality of life. And I think we should be doing everything we can to contribute to the solutions, including water, solar, sustainable, reasonable, responsible energy uses, and more.
Mark Dean.
I agree with the points that have been made. I think there are some, you know, water control, water management is probably the biggest issue that we have to deal with going forward. There are some opportunities, I think, out there as we recognize that the growing season is lengthening and the water flow is changing. So we can do some crop rotation ideas and different cover crops, trying to deal with some of those issues. I look to GreenSeam, which is a consortium of agricultural businesses in the 11 counties in central Minnesota and into northern Iowa for their expertise because those are the folks that are dealing with it, both with the actual working of the farms, right up to the tax accounting and everything that goes with it. And I think there are some opportunities for them to provide some expertise on things we can do to encourage rain gardens and holding ponds and all those types of things to help water management. Greater Mankato Growth has also started a Transforming Together initiative, looking at the future into 2040, looking for strategic ideas on housing and agriculture and transportation and how we're going to deal with the changing environment that we're in. And I would encourage everyone to participate in that because that'll be an opportunity to set some strategic plans that all of us can be involved with.
Thank you. For question six, the rotation will be John Lipke, Tom Hagan, Marie Drannel, Terry Morrow, Mark Dean, Kurt Zins, Jennifer Andraschko, and Jack Colars. And question six states, what if any changes in the process of setting salaries for county-elected officials and employees would you make? Starting with John.
I can't think of any right offhand. I think it's a pretty decent system. Maybe some of the lower-paid employees should get a little bigger percentage of raise just because of the cost of living. As it goes up, it goes up more percentage-wise for a small or for a lower-wage earner to feed their family.
Tom Hagan.
I would think there might be something innovative we might try at this difficult period. And that might be offering incentives to employees who department heads or even individuals who have found ways to save the county money. So they may know something that we aren't aware of at the level of commissioners that, when implemented, could save a considerable amount of money. And maybe a bonus could be offered to that employee for doing something creative in that realm. Other than that, of course, salaries are an issue that constantly come before board. People are now dealing with inflation, just as the county is, and they'll want their salaries raised to meet that need. And again, the more we do that, the longer we do that, the longer the inflationary cycle continues. So it's important to try to hold the line on these things, but then at the same time, try to find savings. And I think we might use that technique to see if we can't find those savings.
Marie Drannel.
Thank you. Niklet County has a fairly unique pay structure. Seven years ago, we stepped away from a step system where everyone was given a cost of living and a step upgrade every year and went to a pay-for-performance system. So the county board sets the range in which each department's raises can be, and then each department has to come into that. What we have learned through this system is that the overachievers do well and continue to progress. The underachievers tend to leave our system and leave employment with Niklet County. It has been a good hiring tool because it encourages people to keep working forward, bringing forth productive changes to our system. In addition, as part of this system, we have the, what's that swim lane thing called? Oh, what's it called? I'm having a brain fart. They analyze each department and each process and do a swim lane chart thing with the Post-its. We have utilized that tool in the last 12 years and did cross-training and moved people around, eliminated steps, and created efficiencies within departments. We just, as mentioned earlier, completed a compensation study. We compared our salaries and wages to similar counties and cities of sizes and found that we were fairly close, even in a high-inflationary period, which time will tell if that holds. Thank you.
Is, oops, there we go. Next is Terry.
Thank you, thank you. Certainly, wages are the biggest part of our budget, other than capital expenditures. I believe our employees have been reasonable. There have been negotiations with bargaining units, there have been discussions with individuals, department heads. We need to pay people fairly, just as every person at this table wants to be treated and paid fairly. It's interesting, Tom, I had a, I went to a conference last week about what are some of the non-dollar things that employers can do to keep employees. Remote work was one. To have greater variation in healthcare coverage opportunities because, Tom, you and I probably have different needs, perhaps, when it comes to healthcare, to make the healthcare opportunities more closely aligned with the individual employee. Including in the healthcare, and Tom, you'll like this one, apparently pet insurance is a thing. And now everyone laughed at the conference when they mentioned pet insurance, and they then said it's one of the most popular things that people coming to an employer are interested in. They say, "Do you have pet insurance?" or they're interested in the opportunity. I'm not making light of the problem. I'm encouraging the variation, the thinking, as you said, Tom, outside the box. We did the wage comparison. We know what we need to do, and we're taking reasonable steps to get there.
Mark Dean.
People are our most valuable resource, and in a time of workforce shortages, that's going to only become a bigger challenge for all of us. Things that we can do to encourage growth of our employees so that they want to stay within the system and see opportunities to progress, both in their knowledge base and in their skills, and then in their wages, I think are things that we want to encourage. To your point, Terry, the variation on healthcare benefits, I think that individualized benefits so that someone like myself that no longer needs full-family medical or care for pregnancies or things like that isn't something that I'm paying for, that I don't need. I think that individualization of healthcare is a good opportunity going forward. And we need to make sure that we're being very competitive, so I compliment you on doing the compensation study because in this day and age, you're seeing a lot of poaching between entities for well-educated and well-experienced staff. And so if we're going to hold our staff, we need to make sure we're doing the best we can to do everything and keep them happy and healthy as employees.
Kurt Zins.
I'm not sure there's much I could add that hasn't already been said about wages for the county workers. Obviously, we need to be competitive with other jobs because we want to attract quality people, just like everybody else says here. One thing I don't think has really been talked about that I actually do think that maybe needs to be changed is how the county commissioners are compensated. The county commissioners vote for their own pay raise. I don't agree with that. I mean, I don't, I think that the people should vote for our pay raise. I'm not sure exactly how we would go about that, whether it would be hiring or, how should I say, having a, some kind of a committee that's made up of representatives of the county that could grade the way that the county commissioners' salaries are arrived at. Another thing would be paying for people while that they're working for you, but not after they're working for us. And I also reference this to the county commissioners. The county commissioners get healthcare after they leave. I don't agree with that because I don't think that the county employees get that. I think the county employees and the county commissioners should be on an even playing field with their compensation and benefits package.
Jennifer Andraschko.
I don't know that I'll speak specifically to what needs to happen to current salary schedules. I haven't been on the inside of those compensation studies. And I trust that my colleagues here on this stage are pretty thoughtful about that. But what I would say is with the retirements and the workforce shortages, I think there are some creative ways to be thinking, especially in rural United States and in rural Minnesota, about the rural workforce shortage. It is a little different when you see sort of talent moving to metro areas. I remember I lived in another county in this part of the state when I first moved here to south-central Minnesota, and at that time, a social worker in mental health in that county made half of what that person with that title in Hennepin County made. Half is different than 80% or, you know, 70%. That was shocking to me. And so I think doing some comparative studies, looking at compensation in that way is important. I also think that we know a couple of things about recruiting and retaining people in rural Minnesota and in rural America. And one is that if we can targetedly recruit people who have grown up in rural areas, those are the people most likely to choose to stay and work in rural areas. We can be doing that in high schools. I know Wasika County is doing a really cool thing where they're marketing this internship program to high school seniors. And then they go off to college, and then they come back the first summer after their first year of college, and they spend the summer working at the county. So thinking about recruitment and not only salaries.
Jack Colars.
Could you please repeat the question again? I've been waiting a long time.
Certainly. What, if any, changes in the process of setting salaries for county-elected officials and employees would you make?
So, Mr. Zins, let me just direct this to you. County commissioners are the lowest-paid people in Niklet County. County commissioners vote on their own raises because that's what we do. We get the same amount of raise as anyone in Niklet County. We are not on the pay-for-performance, however. And some people think I'm doing a hell of a job, but I always tell my county commissioners, "Are we going to raise the salary?" and I always need to count to three. So the answer is no. Niklet County is in the Niklet County is in the business of retaining and attracting and retaining good employees. We have to be competitive with our neighbors, not only in the city, in other counties, and in state government. Our benefits in Niklet County probably are better than any city, county, or state government employee. Maybe not state, but we're close. So I will say that the process that we use is a good and decent process, especially the pay-for-performance, which ended the old silo of the county auditor deciding who got a raise, if he liked them or not.
Thank you. The order for question seven is as follows. Mark Dian, Jennifer Andrasco, Tom Hagan, Jack Colars, Marie Drannel, John Lipke, Kurt Zins, Terry Morrow. And question seven states, "How do you check the accuracy of information you receive to avoid spreading misinformation?" Beginning with Mark Dian.
Checking the accuracy of information is certainly important, and oftentimes, when you're in government, you have to make decisions with incomplete information, based on the information that's available at the time. I have a science background, so I rely on the literature quite often when I'm looking for solutions to issues that are addressing the council and the board. I also rely on my experience, both professional and personal, and then I like to try and talk to sources that have more knowledge than I do. Mentors, experts in their field, reach out to those folks and try and get as much information as I can, so that I can make the best decision possible and go forward from that basis, and then be willing to change my opinion if additional information or new, new sources are found to be available.
Jennifer is next.
Thank you. I am someone who's pretty uncomfortable with stating, you know, "I'm not sure." I'm a social worker, I'm someone who is not shy about resourcing and, and, you know, my ego isn't wrapped up in being all-knowing or knowing all the things. I think, you know, each of us on this stage has a wheelhouse, and I think that the more, most direct answer is that, in order to make informed, competent decisions with integrity, I would show up as a curious person, and I'm willing to do that learning. I also, like the previous speaker stated, I would look to the experts. I would want to hear all of the voices in the room, and I would want as much information as I can to make a really informed decision. I'm not generally someone who shows up at a table and sort of says, "I know where I'm headed," and I know exactly what I'm going to do or say, or how I'm going to vote. I really want all of the data. And to the extent at which it might be maddening sometimes to people I'm working on projects with, because I want a lot of context, and I want to make sure that I have as much truth and, and information as I can. The last thing I would say is, I'm pretty uncomfortable with ambivalence, and I know that if you can sit in a space where you don't know exactly what to do next, that's kind of where innovation happens. So I'm someone who is information-seeking and curious, and would be willing to look outside of the things I know.
Tom Hagan.
You know, I'm going to agree with Jack Colars on this one, that the great damage was done, starting in 2016, with a leader of a country that claimed everything was fake news that he hadn't put out. We have got to get back to trusting our news sources, particularly the print sources, who have to publish retractions if they put something in the paper that's not correct, and also rely on science and the so-called elites that everyone is now talking about that you can't believe. Double-blind studies, when you've got ninety-six percent of all scientists telling us that global climate change is existing and is human-caused by the carbon in the atmosphere, I think that case has been solved. Down the road, there might be some changes in the data, but the data has shown this for twenty years. So we've got to stop following conspiracy theories, going to the internet for our sources, and begin to trust, once again, the major news networks, the newspapers, and, and science, quite frankly. So that would be my suggestion for finding truth.
Jack Colars.
Thank you for the question. I'm going to narrow it down to the accuracy of information received at the county level, okay? I rely on our county department heads. And let me tell you why. Most of them are women. Mandy Landkammer, Administrator, Cassie Sassenberg, Head of Health and Human Services, Jackie Copan runs Elections and Property Services. Michelle Zender Fisher is our county attorney. Linda Doherty is our recorder. We have more women in leadership positions in Niklet County than I think most counties do. I'm proud of that, I'm grateful for their work, and women deliver. They bring back studied recommendations, I like that. I rely on common sense and common practice, I think we're getting that in Niklet County. Thank you.
Marie Drannel.
Thank you. My first impression when I heard the question was, "Go to the source." You don't know the accuracy of the information until you go to the source. Information is brought to us on a regular basis, as Jack said, from department heads. It has to be disseminated and, and broken down. A simple phone call, a simple email, you'd go to the source. If the source doesn't have it, the source is going to tell you where to go to get it. My professional life deals with statutes and facts and figures and numbers, and everything goes back to a statute, everything goes back to a code. This is no different with most of the things we deal, deal with. You have to go back to the statute, you have to go back to the source. We have good people that bring good information to us. As Jack said, we are led by a lot of women, and it seems to work quite well. So, thank you.
John Lipke.
Well, I'm going to echo what my fellow commissioners said about our department heads. They are a valuable source to talk to. If they don't know the answer, they're going to try their darndest to get it. I also think our current board, well, when our good friend Terry Morrow came on, he said, "I'm a licensed attorney." You can, I'm going to ask John if it's a question about farm stuff, feel free to ask me a legal question. So Terry's got the legal, I got the farm, at least, I think I do. Jack's in the real estate, Marie is an accountant. We can get a lot of stuff figured out just when we talk. Thank you.
Kurt Zins.
Well, I don't know who said it, but I'm sure you've all heard it. If you read, if you don't read the paper, you're uninformed, and if you do read the paper, you're misinformed. So, and I, I think that's truer today than it ever was. And I, I think I would agree mostly with what Marie Drannel has said here. You go directly to the source, you find the facts, and you trust the people you know. I think you have to weed through so much if you're going to read everything in the press, and, because, you know, I don't care what anybody says, the press is biased. And you only get whatever side, whatever person is trying to put out. But when it comes to trying to, you know, disseminate information, and you're talking about not disseminating false information, well, don't. If you're not sure, and you don't know, and you can't verify the information, don't spread it.
And Terry Morrow.
So I've been sitting here for thirty minutes, wondering whether all dogs really should be immunized for rabies, and the word that concerned me was "all." I don't know. I don't know if there are some dogs that have a condition for which immunization would actually cause an adverse health effect. So I said, "No," because I didn't know. Well, what I'd do, I would do what most of the folks here said. I would ask so many questions, maybe a veterinarian, maybe go down to Kind Vet, our vet, and say, "Can all dogs be vaccinated for rabies?" I'm not trying to make light of it. That was what stuck me on that question, was the word "all," because I didn't have enough information to give a credible yes answer. Certainly, multiple sources, check your sources. Just as, Mark, you're a doctor, and you've been trained a certain way. As a professor, I was trained in a certain academic way. Check your sources, multiple sources, talk with experts. One of the nice things, given my experiences with the school districts, on the school board, with the legislature, is I have some people who I can really ask, who really know the answer on some of the questions, whether it comes from, to elections, to environmental issues, to health and service, human services issues, to road and bridge projects. We have a wealth of great people as our department heads, and I just would leave with this thought, I still believe that the smartest person in, in the room is a person who knows what they don't know.
Thank you all. Our closing remarks will be offered in the reverse order of our opening remarks, beginning at the far end of the table with Kurt Zins.
I guess I'd like to thank everybody again for this opportunity, and thank the voters for their consideration and support. I take this opportunity very seriously, and I want the voters to know that I will pledge to be accessible and responsive to their needs and concerns, and I will always put their best interests first. I feel my business and work experience and past volunteer service will be an asset to the board, and will help me work with my fellow commissioners to represent all citizens of the county. I believe in low taxes and small, efficient government. I want the voters to know that I will work hard so that Niklet County will continue to be a safe and prosperous place to live. I am committed to bringing transparent, conservative leadership to the county board that supports our agricultural, our residential, and our industrial communities. It would be my honor to serve you, and I ask you for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity. Thank you for this opportunity. I'm happy to serve my constituents and the whole county. There is a challenge to meet all Minnesota and federal requirements, but we have to do our best at fiscal responsibility. I've developed relationships with county staff, commissioners, as well as DNR officials, DOT officials, state representatives, senators, which can be helpful when trying to help our citizens. I have developed some expertise on roads, ditches, conservation, and other county issues. Up till now, my thing with ditches was paying for them, and now I know a lot more about it. I've represented Niklet County and on other boards and committees. I've been helped into this, excuse me, into this position by various board and leadership experience on profit and nonprofit boards. Safety comes first. We have to support our public works and our sheriff department, because they try to make us safe. Thank you.
Tom Hagan.
We've discussed a lot of topics tonight, and all of them are important, but if we haven't got a sustainable environment in which to live, they become irrelevant. So my basic premise here is that we need to have sustainable energy, sustainable natural environment, and a sustainable growth and development project, in order for this county to go forward and prosper in the future. Changes are coming. As climate warms, as growing seasons grow longer, there will be new pests, there'll be stresses on our crops that will have to be dealt with. We are in the second year of a drought, we don't know how long that's going to last. All of this takes precedent, the natural environment. I would like to see the county actually turn to considering the natural environment as part of our infrastructure, not just roads and bridges, but soil, water, and air, because without those, we do not have a future.
First, I want to thank the League of Women Voters in the St. Peter Chamber for hosting tonight's Candidates Forum, and to all of our viewers. I also want to thank each of the candidates who have voiced their passion to serve our community in a leadership role. It takes courage to stand for election, and I congratulate each of you, especially our election newcomers, for doing so, and I wish all of you good luck. I'm proud to have served North Mankato as their mayor the last twelve years, and I think that's provided me valuable experience that would be of, of use to the commission. And I would also say that my thirty-six years in healthcare, as healthcare is one of the largest portions of the county budget, would also be a valuable resource going forward. I, I hope to represent all of our citizens and serve the county with, providing a well-informed, fresh point of view, as we address the arising issues during the interesting days ahead. Thank you.
Thanks again to the League and to the chamber, to our folks here today. I've been in Niklet County since nineteen eighty-six, been involved in youth football, basketball coaching, served on the county board since January of ninety-seven, been involved in all facets of county government, most notably in transportation. As Commissioner Morrow talked about earlier, the Highway fourteen connection from North Mankato going to New Ulm now in the next couple of years, well, hopefully before that, will be a tremendous, tremendous achievement. County government really isn't glamorous, but it is essential in providing health and human services, safe roads, criminal justice services to our county residents. And county commissioners here in our county don't carry a political label, so compromise and consensus are very important. When I was first elected in nineteen ninety-seven, I spent the first two years listening about the unique function of county government here in Minnesota. And I'm still listening, still learning. When new folks are elected, I listen even closer. Sometimes new commissioners come with an axe to grind, or some sort of a issue that they want, instead of listening and learning. Those oftentimes are unsuccessful commissioners. Listening, learning, the nuances of county government is essential to becoming a good county commissioner and a good representative for all county residents. Thank you, I look forward to serving you the next four years.
I too share my gratitude for the League of Women Voters and for everyone who participated and helped put on this forum. I, I have two points to make. Number one, I am not calling for pet insurance benefits, I want to be real clear about that. That was simply a point to show to be open-minded to new ideas. And number two, I don't take pay raises as a commissioner. My personal approach, and I think it is a personal approach, is to wait to another term, if at all. But that's just my personal approach. I have learned so much in four years in this position, it's been exciting. Even with the struggles of the pandemic, even with John, County Road Twelve, I mean, the, the, the projects that had to be done, the, the things that had to occur, I'm energized. I'm energized because our staff has been so fantastic in helping teach me what needs to be done, and what the constraints are, and what the options are. So I'm, I'm honored to serve on this board, I'm honored to serve this, as, as a commissioner. You know, when Martha and I came here with Maggie back in ninety-five, we came here, so I could, I took a teaching job at Gustavus. And from then till now, it's been wonderful to work with, to learn from, to listen to folks in our community. I'm grateful to folks for their support, and I'm really grateful to Martha for allowing me to pursue this public service.
Thank you. I too would like to express my appreciation to the League, the Chamber, and the Herald. I'm a little bit disappointed that we have to watch this over the internet, because I live in a dead zone of broadband. I can't watch this at home, and we didn't get to this conversation today. So keep that in mind. I have learned so much over the last eleven years, and every day, I learn something new in county government. I have been blessed by, as Terry and Jack mentioned, staff that bring forth ideas, bring forth educational opportunities, explain the nuances of drainage. I live in the Sand Prairie, we don't have a water problem. Well, we do, we don't have enough. I have to thank my family and my support behind me, because I couldn't do it without them.
Thank you to the League of Women Voters and to the Chamber and to the Herald. I, you know, we've talked tonight about a lot of the priorities, the priorities that, many of the priorities that the board has to balance as they do their work, and from roads and bridges that we drive on, to the way we manage water, to the way we deliver mental health care. Every decision that a county board makes is local. It isn't simply an item on, on an agenda or a Robert's Rules process, but real votes that impact real human lives. I, it's not lost on me that- I, it's not lost on me that there are competing needs and that there is a learning curve. I can't promise that if I'm elected, I will know everything on day one that I should know about gradation specs for county gravel roads or, you know, how to engineer a ditch, but I can promise that I will do the work and the learning that this work requires. I'm ready to invest in a countywide community that is safe and inclusive and equitable and thriving. In short, I am someone who, in a sort of era when we're pretty disenchanted with politics, I'm someone who still believes in the power of local government to do good and the people that it's meant to serve. Thank you.
And I will once again offer David McGuire's statement, who is the other candidate in District Three. I wish to thank the League of Women Voters for the invitation for the forum for candidates for Niklet County Commissioner. I'd planned to attend, but there were two deaths in my family. My uncle's visitation is the night of the forum, and I should be there. I'm running for county commissioner because I do believe I can do the job and have ideas that would be beneficial to the residents of Niklet County. I believe that county government could be somewhat more transparent to the people of the county and be more financially responsible, especially when everyone in the nation is experiencing financial difficulties. Local government bodies should not add to the problem. Everyone working for the county, from county commissioners to desk clerks, should treat everyone who does business with the county with kindness, dignity, and respect, regardless of their status, from legislators to farmers and businesspeople, regardless of their race. Nobody should be turned away or ignored or treated with hostility and canceled by the people they elected to represent them on the county board. Commissioners should be willing to listen to their constituents' questions and ideas and be able to provide answers to the best of their ability. If elected, I promise to do just that. Again, I would have liked to have been there, but some unfortunate family events occurred that make it impossible for me to attend. And now, from the League of Women Voters of St. Peter, this concludes our forum. If we did not get to your question, please contact the candidates directly. I want to thank each of our candidates for participating this evening. Thanks also go to the co-hosts, the St. Peter Chamber of Commerce, and the St. Peter Herald, to the St. Peter School District, the City of St. Peter, and my fellow League volunteers. Thank you for watching. For more information about voting and these candidates, please visit www.vote411.org. Thank you.